Commissioner Lyde.
President.
Commissioner Diaz.
Here.
Commissioner Bray. Commissioner Wagner.
President.
Commissioner Kriner. Vice Chair Hardy.
President, thank you.
Chair Vane.
Here. Will now take the pledge of allegiance, everyone, please stand. Ready, begin.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, in the great soul of every being.
All right, next is, what I'll do is I'll read the procedures.
Chair. Before you start the procedures, could we have the translator that's in the chambers introduce herself and offer translation services?
Yes, please, can we please have a translator please step to the podium? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. If anybody who needs translation services and moan, please, it's going to be sit in the first two rows or so, so that way the translator can help. I'll go ahead and read the procedures for tonight. This meeting is being conducted in person and electronically. The public may participate in tonight's meeting by using the Zoom link provided on the planning commission agenda. Please note that all virtual participants will be unmute until they are called upon by the chair, at which point they will be unmuted. If you are a member of the public and would like to comment on item, use the raise hand function on Zoom. To avoid any confusion, please wait for the item you desire to comment on to be called by the chair before electronically raising your hand. For each matter considered by the commission, there will first be a staff presentation, followed by a presentation for the project applicant. Testimony from supports of the project would then be taken, followed by testimony from those in opposition. The applicant will have the right to a final rebuttal presentation prior to closing the public hearing. In accordance with section thirteen of Article Two of the Planning Commission rules and regulations governing length of public debate, all public testimony from those in support and in opposition of the project will be limited to three minutes per person. The three limit lights on the podium next to the microphone will indicate the amount of time remaining for the speaker. The green light will be turned on when the speaker begins, the yellow light will come on with the soft bell ring with one minute is remaining. The speaker should be completing the testimony by the time the red light comes on with the final bell indicating time has expired. All in-person public testimony must be presented to the commission at the podium. Any testimony that references race, religion, ethnicity, economic status, national origin, or any other classification protected under state or federal law in a derogatory manner shall be deemed irrelevant and would not be considered by the commission in making its land use determinations. If you challenge these land use matters in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised in oral or written testimony or before the close of the hearing. Next, we have the agenda approval. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Good evening, Chair Vane, members of the planning commission, I'm Israel Trejo with the planning and development department. There are no changes to the agenda, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have our first and the second, let's please take vote.
Commissioner Lyde. Commissioner Diaz.
Yes.
Commissioner Bray. Commissioner Wagner.
Yes.
Commissioner Kriner. Vice Chair Hardy.
Yes.
Chair Vane.
Yes, motion passes. Next, we have the consent calendar. So, under the consent calendar, we have this one specific item that I'm going to go ahead and open to public comments. This is item ID 23424. Do we have any public comments in regard to this item? This is the plan development permit application number P2204278.
Mr. McDonald.
Good evening, Commissioner Bang and commission members, Gary McDonald. There's one item that's a condition for the approval of this track map and it's a signalization at the corner of Chestnut and Somerville. As a part of that condition, we agree to it that we cannot pull any building permits until that signalization is completed. However, we have been in contact with the staff and it is very possible that there will be a change of that. And should that change come about, we would like to effectuate that. And if it's necessary to come back to the commission, of course, we would be happy to bring that back to you. So, that's my thought.
All right, thank you very much, appreciate it. Do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Let's please take vote.
Commissioner Lyde. Commissioner Diaz.
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner.
Yes.
Vice Chair Hardy.
Yes.
Chair Vane.
Yes, motion passes. Next, we have reports by commissioners. I do want to introduce, we have a new commissioner, we have Commissioner Lyde. Wanted to definitely welcome you. I know that you come with a great experience that can definitely help out the community. You want to go ahead and state some comments?
Thank you for inviting me and I'm just happy to be here and happy to serve, thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any reports by the commission?
I do, Chair, thank you. I will be recusing from item 23-167, I have a conflict in own property within five hundred feet from this project.
Thank you. Please take a note of that, we'll make sure that we disclose that prior to that. Next, we'll go ahead and move to new matters. Under new matters, we have ID 23362. This is a rezone application for number P2200507. Let's please make notation that we have Commissioner Bray in attendance too.
Chair Bang, I believe that the item is ID 23-386. It is an appeal, consideration of appeal of conditional use permit, application P2202534.
Thank you. Let's please have staff present.
Good evening, commissioners and the public. My name is Stephen Martinez with the planning and development department and I will be presenting on this appeal. Sorry, papers are sliding here. Can I have the next slide, please? Conditional use permit application number P22-02534 was filed by Jan Robertson of IT Architecture on behalf of Starbucks and pertains to a, the subject site located at 2840 Tillery Street. The applicant proposes to construct a 2,400 square foot Starbucks building with a 900 square foot outdoor seating area, a drive-through with a capacity of seventeen vehicles, and they also propose full improvements to the site with a new parking lot and landscaping. Next slide, please. Pursuant to section fifteen dash fifteen oh two of the municipal code, drive-throughs are permitted in this zone district subject to a conditional use permit and all applicable provisions of section fifteen dash twenty seven twenty eight and policies and procedure issue C dash zero zero one have been applied to the project. Next slide, please. Here we have a vicinity map, the project site is located east of Tillery and R Street, the intersection between grocery outlet and La Quinta Inn, next slide, please. Here we have an aerial of the site. In addition to the grocery store and the hotel, we have various offices, a cathedral, and high-density residential. Next slide, please. And here we have the zoning, the subject property and immediate surrounding parcels are zone downtown neighborhood. Beyond that, we have the downtown general, public and institutional and residential single-family zone districts, next slide. On November thirtieth of last year, a notice of intent to take action was mailed to all property owners within a thousand feet of the subject site, as we can see with the green and red map. In January of this year, or excuse me, for the notice of intent to take action, one person did request notification of the director's decision. And on January eighteenth of this year, a notice of action was mailed and two appeals were received. And March third of this year, the notice of hearing for tonight's meeting was mailed out, next slide, please. In the appeal letter, there were five issues overall. Issues number one and two were similar. And an appellant stated that the project will block pedestrian and traffic flow when the drive-through is at capacity. They stated drivers will make a left turn into the drive-through, therefore blocking the sidewalk and street. As we can see with the exhibit, the entrance of the drive-through is actually a hundred and sixty feet away from the sidewalks. So, when the drive-through is at capacity, it will not block the sidewalk or any lanes of traffic. Next slide, please. For issue number three, it was said that more should be done to encourage a taller building and a different business to essentially serve more local interest. Pursuant to the municipal code, as previously stated, drive-throughs are conditionally permitted in this zone district and the project as condition meets the objective zoning standards. Therefore, the project cannot be denied on the basis of design nor the company itself, next slide, please. And for issues number four and five, the appellant stated that PM 2.5 was not considered by the air district and that the project would have significant air impacts. The air district actually did include PM 2.5 in their review, excuse me, and concluded that emissions for construction and operation would not exceed any air quality significance thresholds. Next slide, please. So, in consideration of this project as a whole, we found that the project was appropriate and approvable. And staff recommends that the planning commission consider the environmental assessment, that the project is exempt from CEQA through a class thirty-two exemption, and deny the appeal and uphold the action of the planning director's approval of the conditional use permit. Next slide, and I am available for any questions.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Do we have any questions from the commission?
Thank you for your presentation. So, I know one of the concerns that came up in those appeal letters was the the cars that are lined up for the drive-through impacting the traffic patterns of the surrounding area. I know that there are three other Starbucks locations or drive-through locations within close proximity to this proposed location. Can you talk a little bit about what you've seen in terms of vehicle traffic and how this project might be a little bit? Or maybe this is better for the, the appellant to talk about?
I would agree that that would be better for the applicant, yes.
Thank you, I'll hold that one.
Do we have any other questions from the commission? I see none, thank you, appreciate it. Let's please have the applicant approach the podium and
see here, yeah, we're on. Hello, everybody, Jan Robertson, architect. Thank you, Stephen, good presentation. So, actually, this, the queuing for this is seventeen cars, which is seven cars in excess of most Starbucks. So, this actually has an enhanced queuing lane. And I have a, I don't know if the presentation up here, you go to the next slide, please. There you go. So, the Starbucks currently employs eight hundred and forty Fresno residents in their existing thirty-one stores. The opportunity for youth, the new location will create about The opportunity for youth, the new location will create about 25 full and part-time jobs with competitive pay, benefits, flexible hours, healthcare coverage, and equity in the form of stock. Starbucks is diverse as communities they serve through local hiring efforts. Starbucks offers eligible part and full-time partners the opportunity to earn bachelor's degrees with full tuition coverage. And identified as a solar pilot store, this location incorporates solar panels into the building design, which sets Starbucks one step closer to the goal of building carbon-neutral stores. So these solar panels, by the way, are over the patio, which offers a welcome shade in the summer. Strategic, next slide, please. There you go, thank you. Strategically located to offer downtown residents a community store-type experience above and beyond what is currently offered in existing downtown locations. So this store is actually larger than the other stores in the neighborhood and is specifically designed for enhanced indoor and outdoor dining experiences. Intentionally designed to encourage pedestrian activity and community interaction, a new format Starbucks within the 2,400 square feet of interior space and additional 900 square feet of enclosed solar-covered patio. Actually, the patio is not fully enclosed, it has a railing around it for safety. Will be the largest Starbucks in Fresno market. Ideal location to support the existing Starbucks in downtown, which are smaller and more impacted by high volumes as detailed below. A 2325 Current Street and the Crescent Building primarily serving the daytime office workers with limited indoor seating with only 1,500 square feet. 1100 U Street primarily serving Fresno Community Hospital is consistently the highest-volume store in the Fresno market. Wait times in this drive-through are typically higher than Starbucks standards, and it might be noted, this is a couple blocks away from that Starbucks, so we anticipate people migrating to this Starbucks rather than waiting in inordinate queuing lines at the 1100 U Street. A developer and Starbucks representative, oh, next slide, I'm sorry. Thank you. So the developer and Starbucks representative met in person with the neighbors who submitted appeal letters for the project. As a result, the meetings, of the meetings, several positive changes are being implemented to help the environmental concerns. As suggested by San Joaquin Air Pollution Control District, the project will now have landscape barriers and vegetative screening. The developer subsequently met with Tree Fresno to discuss the best plants and trees for carbon storage and pollution filtering. The project will now include four EV chargers installed with the initial construction. As mentioned in the first slide, the project includes 900 square feet of solar with the goal of producing 30 kilowatts of power monthly. Although not required as part of the approvals, the developer commissioned a VMT study, that's vehicular miles traveled, for those that don't know the acronym, through the Fresno Council of Government, showing an actual decrease in vehicle miles traveled once this project is built. And again, this is in part to alleviate the long wait lines and some of the other Starbucks locally. In addition, environmental benefit is local traffic using efficiently-designed drive-through location instead of 1100 U Street, which will decrease the overall amount of time cars are idling in that impacted drive-through. And, next slide. And we have a couple of images here. There's the 3D image of the store with the solar panels over the patio and EV charging stations. And next slide, please. And there's an example of the shrubs that we intend to plant, in part in lieu of a just concrete block screen wall. We think these will be a lot better looking. Any questions?
Thank you. We have any questions from the Commission?
With the specialized dual-drive-through, what is your wait time and your idle time for vehicles going through that?
I, I'm not sure.
Commissioner, can you speak up a little bit? I couldn't quite hear you.
I had asked what the idle time was on the vehicles using the dual-lane drive-through versus a standard.
Thank you.
Question now, we've had, you've had some individuals from the area reach out. Have they reached out to you directly, too?
No, no, I have not had any direct calls.
Okay, have you done any kind of outreach to the local community at all?
I have not personally, no.
We have any questions from the Commission? I see none, thank you. Commissioner Lidda?
In terms of the EV chargers, how fast can a car get a charge? Is it something where they can charge rapidly, or something where a car will have to basically stay there all day to take out a charge?
I, I am not sure on that.
Well, thank you, appreciate it.
All right.
We'll now go to the public for any public comments. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment in favor of the application that are in the chambers? If so, please approach the podium, state your name, address, you have three minutes. Anyone in the chambers who would like to speak in favor of the application? Go ahead, you can, you can approach your podium. No, you can approach your podium, please state your name and address, and you have three minutes, miss.
We're from Grocery Outlet and 2820 Tillery Street.
Would you mind if you, can you lower your microphone, miss? Thank you, and please state your name and address.
Yvonne Subia, 2820 Tillery Street, we're the Grocery Outlet. The only thing that I can say is that, you know, we've had that parking lot that there's just, just dirt there, and what happens is you get a lot of homeless in that area, and we think that if we put, if they put a Starbucks there, it would help our business, and not only that, it would keep the homeless out of that area. They usually do provide security in that, and we have at the hotel also security, so it kind of helps us to where we don't have so many homeless hanging out in the dirt field out there.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Do we have any other individuals in the chambers who would like to speak in favor of the application? I see none, do we have any individuals on Zoom who would like to speak in favor of the application?
Yes.
Please state your name, address, and you have three minutes.
Monique?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, thank you, I'm sorry, I'm traveling, I'm calling in from the car. I was trying to comment on the question regarding how long the cars are idling in the drive-through lane. So with this new design, the interior engine is specifically enhanced to promote faster out-the-window times, to be sensitive to how long cars are in our drive-throughs. So our baristas have goals set, and right now the goals are from the point, from the time when a customer orders, the order point, to not be sitting in the drive-through lane for longer than 40 to 60 seconds. So it's dramatically increased. Our older stores that you're referencing in the downtown market, those are, they're older designs, older layouts, you know, we're constantly learning and innovating our interior layout, so to intentionally make the process more efficient. And so, right now, that is their, that is their goal, under 60 seconds for cars.
Monique, what's your relation in regard to the applicant? Are you part of the applicant's team?
He is, I'm the Starbucks representative, and he is the developer on the project, and he also is the Starbucks broker.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Do we have any other individuals on Zoom who would like to speak in favor of the application?
Yes.
Please state your name, address, and you have three minutes.
I'm actually wishing to speak in opposition to the project, so I'll wait my turn.
Thank you. Do we have any other individuals who would like to speak in favor? If so, if you're on Zoom, please press the raise hand function.
Nothing else?
All right. Let's go ahead and, if you're in the chambers, please go ahead and approach a podium, state your name, address, you have three minutes. And again, this is for the public who would like to speak in favor of the application.
Hello, Commissioner, my name is Vaheer, but resident here in Fresno, California. I have no relations with the applicant, nor do I have any history with them, but I do want to speak in favor of this application based on my observation on the agenda, and that it doesn't, it doesn't make sense to deny this project just solely based, based on inputs that doesn't promote economic development in our community. I'm here to just talk about what the applicant has mentioned about the job that could bring into the community and Starbucks. I haven't, I have no stake in Starbucks, but however, I do want to speak that having, having this project approved could also improve economics in the, in the Tillery area, so I just want to speak, I just want to speak on that behalf, thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other public comments that would like to speak in favor of the application? I see none, we'll go ahead and go to the public. Any individuals of the public who would like to speak in opposition of the, of the application? If you're in the chambers, please approach a podium, state your name, you have three minutes. I see none in the chambers. Do we have the individual online who would like to speak in opposition?
Yes, I'm online and I'd like to speak in opposition.
Yep, you're fine, you have, please state your name, address, and you have three minutes, sir.
Certainly. My name is Sean Boyd, I live at 2898 Huntington Boulevard, number 123, at Huntington Park condominium village. My comments represent myself only and do, and do not represent the opinions of anybody else in our 800 condominium development, which is south of the proposed project. I'd like to ask the Commissioners a question, and you may not have the answer, and that's okay, I wouldn't expect you to, but I just want you to think about something a little bit. And I know you're not the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District Board, but often, planning ends up being colloquial instead of regional, so I have to pose this question. Does anybody on the Planning Commission know how many projects with drive-throughs have been approved between Lodi and Bakersfield by any of the 75 or so incorporated cities within the eight-county area and within those eight counties? Anybody have an idea of how many projects like this, whether it's a drugstore or something else that has a drive-through that are currently going on? Anybody?
Mr. Boyd, go ahead and continue, and we'll address your question.
Okay, all right. Now, the reason I ask that question is because, to me, it seems like each agency that is overlooking these facilities is pushing their ministerial authority onto other, other agencies. It was said that, by Mr. Martinez, that the air quality district did examine the potential for increased PM 2.5, and they didn't find anything significant. In my conversations with the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District, on the phone with somebody there twice, they told me that they didn't even consider PM 2.5 in their particular mathematical model that they used, only NOx and PM 10, and that those items would be well below the two tons per year emission threshold. The only way that you can examine 2.5 in this project, I understand, is if it had a CEQA overview, which it does not have because of the small size of the project. You know, you're going to vote yes, all of you, and that's okay, and you're going to get your Starbucks on Tillery Street, and that's okay, too. But I think that planning commissions in all 75-plus cities within the eight-county confines of the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District and the counties as well, their planning commissions, should really take a look at this in a, in a broader way, in a more regional way, because while this particular individual, single facility, may not exceed two tons of NOx or two tons of PM 10, it, you know, when you add them all up, if these are continually going in throughout the valley, then you've got some real air quality issues, and of course, reminding you all that South Central Fresno and downtown are part of the South Central Fresno AB 617 High-Impact Area. So those are my comments, I do oppose the project, I'm sure you'll approve it, and thanks for your time tonight.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have any other members of the public who would like to speak in opposition? Janice, do we have any?
Yes.
Please state your name, you have name, address, and you have three minutes.
That's Bo English, 1531 East Hampton Way. I'm not necessarily in opposition, however, with EV chargers and the fact that there is such a dense homeless problem in that area. I'd like to ask the applicant and the developer to make sure that they are fast-charge EV chargers, therefore cars aren't there all day, and you get loitering and other problems that come with that. So it'd be very reassuring if they could confirm that that's what's being put in rather than just your standard slow charge for these vehicles.
All right, thank you very much. Do we have any other individuals who would like to speak in opposition?
None at this time.
All right, thank you. We'll go ahead and close any public comments. The applicant? May you please approach a podium if you could, answer some of these questions?
Yes?
Yep, so we have two questions that I notated. First one, you might not be able to answer this, but it's going to be more probably for the staff in regards to how many drive-throughs. Second one is, is there any way we can get confirmation in regard to the charging stations, if there are going to be fast charge?
I, I, I believe they are, this is under a program from, from San Joaquin Air Pollution Control District, so I don't know what they're offering. I do know it is difficult to get PG&E to provide power for these, since they don't have power for regular businesses, they, but, but it's a state law, so they have to. And I have no idea how many drive-throughs are between Bakersfield and Sacramento, or whatever the question was.
Is there any way, what the public's concerned in regards to that fast charge station, is there any way the public, if they need to reach out to you, are you able to provide like your email or your contact information, just so you can confirm?
Yeah, sure.
They are, okay. Do we have a Starbucks rep or who, anyone on Zoom who's actually has this concrete information regarding the charging station? If they can confirm that this is a fast charge?
I added Monique again.
Okay. Monique, are you able to confirm if this is a fast charge station?
Monique, you are muted, okay.
I am on mute, I'm sorry. I can find out, I do not know offhand.
Okay.
Would that be okay for me to get back?
Yeah, is it, is it possible if, I mean, if you guys can provide like an email or a contact number, so those individuals can reach out to you directly, just so we can get confirmation, too?
Absolutely, yes.
I might add, this, these, these charging stations were added in response to some of the people that, folks that were appealing. So they're not required for the project. I mean, if the public doesn't want them, I mean, we can get rid of them. We didn't, I mean, we had a future, this is under the 2019 code cycle, so we didn't have to energize any of these, just needed to provide for future.
I understand.
So, I mean, you know, honestly, we thought this was something the community wanted, and now we find out maybe they don't want them. I don't, I don't know how the homeless jerry-rigged charging stations, I haven't heard that one yet, but if you guys don't want it, let us know. I mean, I don't know that the developers opposed to not spending the money on it, so...
All right, well, do we have any questions from the Commission? I see none, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. We'll now go ahead and just close our comments, we'll bring this back to the Commission. Do we have any comments, any motions from the Commission?
I'll make a motion. Although I find it quaint that the EV charging stations have to be supplied electricity from PG&E, I think that we should go with the staff's recommendation to deny the... from PG&E, I think that we should go with the staff's recommendation to deny the appeal.
Okay, we have a motion made by Commissioner Bray. We have a second by Commissioner Hardy. Let's please take vote.
Commissioner Lyde? Commissioner Diaz?
Yes.
Commissioner Bray?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hardy?
Yes.
Chair Vang?
Yes, motion passes. All right, so next, we have item ID 23167. We'll go ahead and let's please make a notation that Commissioner Hardy, he will recuse himself from this item. And please note, too, because we are going to have translation services, when we do open this to the public for any public comment, what I'm going to do is I'm going to go ahead and allow the public to speak for two minutes and 30 seconds, and allow the translation services to speak for two minutes and 30 seconds to translate that comment. Okay?
Okay, okay. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Jose Valenzuela, I'm with the Planning and Development Department. Tonight, you will be considering the subject development permit application and the related environmental assessment. The project site is approximately 0.69 acres of vacant property located on the northwest corner of East McKinley and North Fine Avenues. The parcel dimensions are approximately 200 feet by 150 feet. Here, you can see the surrounding land uses in the aerial. To the west, you have small-scale commercials, some fast-food restaurants with drive-throughs. To the north, you have offices. More specifically, the adjacent building is a daycare center, and two other tenants are small, small-scale office. To the east, you have further office uses. To the south and across the street from East McKinley Avenue, you have the, the FID canal, excuse me, the FID canal and the railroad tracks, and then you have your residential. Further, you can see here in this exhibit, the propos, or I'm sorry, the planned land use map and the zoning map. The subject site is zoned light industrial. Properties to the north, to the east, are also planned for light industrial. To the west, you have commercial, public facility, and multifamily. And to the south, as, as mentioned earlier, you have single-family residential. The proposed project consists of the construction of a 4,400-square-foot automated car wash building consisting of a 120-foot car wash, automated car wash tunnel. 16-vehicle vacuum stalls. All washing equipment will occur within the proposed structure. The proposed development includes a 20-foot landscape setbacks along McKinley and North Fine Avenues, a modified drive approach on Fine Avenue and two driver, I'm sorry, a two-way drive aisle to the north of the site. And an eight-vehicle queuing dual-lane payment area on the west side of the, of the project site. To accommodate the proposed development, existing parking stalls within the project parcel will be removed. Again, this is within the project site parcel. No parking stalls. I'm sorry, the... I, I would like to note that the drive aisle that you see on the west side near the property line, it shows two park, or four parking stalls being removed, that that will not occur unless there's a adjacent property owner authorization, and we have provided a condition to that effect. The, the project applicant has stated that they, they would not make any improvements on the adjacent property. Further, describing the project, vacuum stalls, I'm sorry, vacuum turbines will all be enclosed. The washing tunnel is oriented in an east-west layout, therefore, the tunnel opening will face the adjacent parking lot and North Fine Avenues. A two-and-a-half-foot screening wall and landscape will be provided along the western property line and along the north end of the proposed vacuum stalls. Per Table 1302 Land Use Regulations for Employment Districts, the washing use is permitted by right. With additional regulations under Section 15-2711, and those additional regulations have been incorporated in, in your packet under the conditions of approval. Public input, public notice and input. A notice of intent to take action to property owners within 1,000 feet of the project site was not required per the development permit, Article 52 guidelines. However, three letters in opposition were received. On December 8th, 2022, the project was approved. A notice of action was mailed to the applicant and any individual who previously requested to be notified on that same day. On December 23rd, 2022, staff received an appeal from the District Four Councilmember's Office, appealing the project. And on March 3rd, 2023, a notice of public hearing was mailed to property owners within 1,000 feet of the project site. Seven letters of opposition were received and attached as Exhibit S in your packet. Several of the concerns were more or less related to, well, not more or less, but specifically related to reduced parking, removal of ADA stalls, noise, traffic, crime, and water drainage. In terms of noise, the, a sound plan acoustical modeling software was utilized to model future worst-case stationary noise impacts to the adjacent land uses and sensitive uses, which are located adjacent and, as previously mentioned, a daycare use. And across the street, you have more sensitive uses as residential. The model is capable of evaluating multiple stationary noise source impacts at various receiver locations. Worst-case assumes that the blowers, vacuums, and equipment are always operational, when in reality, the noise will, will be intermittent and cycle on and off depending on the customer usage. The Fresno Municipal Code has a maximum exterior noise level for industrial land uses at 70 dBa and 65 for commercial uses. And that threshold is measured at property line. The attached Exhibit O, which is the noise assessment in your packet, concluded that exterior noise level generated by stationary sources will not exceed the city's adopted thresholds. We have a noise consultant on the call if you have any technical questions. Traffic, the proposed use is anticipated to generate no more than 500 average daily trips. And according to the IT TripGen model, with a peak rate of 14.2 trips per 1,000 square feet of gross-floor area, the peak hour demand will not exceed 62 trips. Spillover onto drive aisles will be mitigated through a dual-lane queuing payment area, as previously mentioned, which is located on the west side. Further internal circulation will be facilitated by the drive approach on the west side of the adjacent parcel and circulation behind the building to the second North Fine Approach. In terms of crime, the Fresno Police Department was provided the opportunity to comment on the proposed uses and did not have any issues with the proposed development. In terms of drainage, the Fresno Metropolitan Flood Control District provided requirements for proper drainage to flood control facilities. In fact, there is a couple inlets near the corner, and further flood control requirements are attached as Exhibit J in your staff, in your conditions of approval exhibit. The concerns raised in the appeal letter do not identify a new significant environmental impact or present new information that was not considered under the original approval. The appropriateness of the proposed project was examined with respect to consistency with the Fresno Municipal Code, consistency with the goals and policies of the Fresno General Plan and McLean Community Plan, compatibility with surrounding uses, avoidance with, or mitigation of potentially significant adverse environmental effects. There required findings for a development permit. Upon consideration of this evaluation, it can be concluded that the proposed development permit application is appropriate for the subject property. Staff's recommendation, staff recommends that the planning commission approve the environmental assessment and deny the appeal and uphold the director's decision to approve the development permit, subject to the attached conditions of approval dated December 8th, 2022. This concludes staff's presentation, and we have the applicant, noise consultant, for any questions you might have.
Thank you. First question's going to be, what are the, the hours of operation?
It is 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Or, I might have that a little wrong. I know they close at 7:00, I'm sorry, at 9:00 PM for sure. 7:00 to 9:00, right? 7:00 to 9:00.
7:00 to 9:00, and then is there another car wash, the same? Is it, is there another car wash located nearby?
I believe there's a self-service car wash west of this site.
It's half a mile from this site, but it is a self-serve.
Sir, so not automated.
We have any questions from the commission?
I do. So with the proposed construction, how is that going to impact the handicap accessible spaces in front of the adult daycare facility? And my follow-up to that is, are those ADA-compliant spaces, are they truly compliant? Or would those need to be reconfigured anyway, given the current code?
That's a great question, and they, they would be removed as a result of this project, and coordination would have to occur with our building officials and the adjacent property owner. And I can, perhaps the applicant can also speak to that, but we would, we would require some sort of coordination to bring in some ADA stalls on the adjacent property.
And who bears the, the cost for those updates or changes?
That is a great question. The developers, not the city.
Thank you. I, I also have a question.
Go ahead, Commissioner Bray.
When you talked about the noise, you said that they measured the sound of the machines inside and that those go off and on. But what about that announcement that says, "Put your car in neutral, take your foot off the brake every 20 seconds"? So is that, was that taken into account when they talked about the noise? Because that...
I didn't, I didn't.
Quite irritating, and I don't know why all the employees haven't lost their minds listening to that.
Oh, yeah, that's a great, that's a great question. The assessment included inputs on the, the interior vacuums and the exterior vacuums, but I would have to defer to the, the noise consultant and the applicant, whether that was included in the model.
Yeah, I'd like to know that.
Or if it would even have that automated voice.
What's the noise consultant's name?
Claire.
Claire.
Okay, we'll go ahead and allow Claire to speak when the applicant actually comes up to the podium, too. Do we have any other questions for the staff?
Thank you, appreciate it.
Let's go ahead and have the applicant.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. Orlando Ramirez, 591 East Joy, Fresno, California. We're here on behalf of Mass Investment Groups and also have with me...
Yeah, my name is Seth Ramirez at 591 East Joy as well.
So we started working with the project back in January of 2022, and it was a long process, but it was a long process because we wanted to do it right. We understand that it's a sensitive area and that there is going to be different uses on that area. We understood that there was an office use to the north, and we also understood that we were in the middle of an industrial complex there. The, the whole corridor there is zoned IL, which is industrial, and in the industrial zone district, you are permitted to run everything, and I provided you a summary of that as well. And there's a lot of intensive industrial-type uses that can be permitted by right on this site. We took the car wash in that, we did the demographic study and the market study and realized that this is an ideal location for a car wash, in that it suppresses a lot of the concerns you have with car washes, where the, the more you have, the less people use it, in that it's very similar to the Dutch Bros mentality. When you first got Dutch Bros in the city of Fresno, the queuing was an hour, two hours long. As more and more Dutch Bros became available to the, throughout the city, those queuing lanes reduced significantly. That's the same principle here. Surfthru runs an incredible operation throughout the state of California and, and Washington as well. They use the best technology on their car wash system, so they minimize any impacts when it comes to noise and traffic. They do a great job of with their queuing system, they do double queues and triple queues, in other words, three lanes of waiting, so it reduces amount of any conflict you may have with main drive aisles. So as mentioned, we started in 2022 with the city of Fresno on this project, and we worked diligently back and forth on redesigning the site because it was setback issues, we wanted to make sure we had proper landscaping, we wanted to make sure that, that we could address the circulation issues. We know we have a unique situation in that our parcel encroaches to the north, which is affects some of the parking stalls in that area. Fortunately, there's an additional 45 stalls on the west side of us that, that are more than adequate for the facility. As you may be aware, there is a 10,000-square-foot facility you may hear about in the next few minutes that doesn't utilize any parking for the area. It's a different type of clientele, so parking is really reduced as far as what's required out there. So we, we took a look at that as well. To answer your question regarding the ADA stall and lack of removal of that, we realize that now that there was an ADA stall that's removed and moving it to the west might be an issue. So one of the things we're prepared to do is remove two of the vacuum stations and invert those pocket parking stalls and turn them into ADA stalls, so they're directly across and provide a path of travel to the businesses that are in that area. I think that's a great concession to address that concern. We also mitigated a lot of our sound, we, we, initially, since this is a use that's permitted by right, it's not, it's not subject, it's subject to staff-level review and not subject to a public hearing process unless appealed. So we move forward with that project based on that. There's a significant investment done on this, there's an additional significant investment done in the construction, but once completed, we agree that it would be a great project for the area. It will serve those on McKinley Avenue. We have clients in Greeley, California, that, in there, just as a side note, they never had, they didn't have a car wash there. When we brought a surf to them last month, they were like, "Great, we don't have to come to Fresno anymore and impact their car wash. We can now have our own car wash." It's a much-needed part of society with water regulation, water restrictions. It's another amazing thing about car washes, it takes an average of 60 to 80 gallons to wash your vehicle at a home, in your home using your water hose. With this new technology, you can wash a car as small as a Kia for about 20 gallons, and you could do a Ford F-150, such as what I have, for 26 gallons. and you could do a Ford F-150 such as what I have for 26 gallons. The state requires that 60% of that water is reclaimed or recycled before it goes into the system. Surf Through has taken it a step further, they reclaim actually 70% of the water. So it's an amazing thing in saving water and water conservation, so we applaud them for doing that, and we're really pleased to be working with them. The intent is to develop a quality car wash. We have met all the requirements completely. There's, there's levels of compatibility. Typically, a car wash in another city requires a conditional use permit or a special use permit. And the city of Fresno is permitted by right because this is an IL industrial zone district. Industrial uses are the primary uses that are permitted. Office uses are ancillary. So is this compatible with the land uses there? Yes, it is. Is it compatible with zoning? Yes, it is. Is it compatible with the general plan, the McLean Plan? Yes, it is. All those are consistent. So it's consistent with the goals and policies of the general plan, it's able to utilize city services, it's compatible with the land use industrial classification. So everything checks the boxes as far as we're concerned. Some of the concerns you're going to hear tonight is, is lack of parking or reduction in parking. As I indicated, there's 43 to 44 stalls available, we'll provide an additional stall for ADA accessibility. As you will also find out tonight, that there is a, a use that's being operated in addition to the care facility that is non-compliant, and that came into factor in our concern in that they are expressing concerns regarding lack of parking, but yet they have an additional use on that site that is not permitted, that you will utilize a lot of on-street, off-street parking. If you look at the shared parking agreement for the facility, it indicates that this site, our project site, is only required to provide access to throughout the facility. Parcel A, which is a remaining parcel, is required to provide the parking stalls. It also indicates in the shared access agreement that all parking should be utilized onsite. In this situation with the secondary use at that site, they, if you were to go there on a weekend, you would see 200 to 300 cars all over the street. That's in complete violation of the shared access agreement that was recorded with the parcel. So that is of concern for us because we are considered a compatible use and we are competing or having discussion with a non-compatible use. We understand the, the care facility, we respect the care facility use, we want to be good neighbors, we, we spent two hours onsite with the, with the tenant, the appellant, and several staff members and some of the concerned neighbors. We spent two hours on there trying to mitigate and address these concerns, say, what can we do to make this work? How can we redraw this site to make it more as a neighbor, as part of being a good neighbor and being a champion to our community? What we heard and what we were told specifically is, no matter what we do, we are, we are going to oppose it. We said, we can put screening, we can put a retaining wall, we can do several things there to mitigate some of these concerns you have, but they were, they felt on deaf ears. So that was our concern in that there was nothing we could do to help address or appease the neighbor and say, hey, we want to be a good neighbor. We realized that car washes have a stigma, that's a lot of noise. The sound study that presented that city required that we present mitigates that. It says that at a distance of 100 feet, which is where this says, if you look at the colored diagram, the decibel level falls below 55, 50 to 55 decibels. That is the same decibel as a residential street or a, a conversation between two people. So again, as Jose eloquently alluded to, the assessment backs up the car wash and it is not a noise detriment. That is one thing, when you do a Class 32 exemption under CEQA, it has to be a compatible land use with the goals and policies of the general plan, it has to provide services that are existing with the city, which it does, all sewer water capacity, Fresno Metropolitan Flood Control, and it cannot be detrimental when it comes to noise traffic. And we've met all those requirements, therefore the city was, was utilized the Class 32 exemption under CEQA. I think that covers everything we needed to discuss. If you have any questions, you're welcome to ask those of me or my partner.
Thank you. So you keep referencing this parking agreement, do you know when that parking agreement was actually ratified?
I, we, I had all that documentation, we had to run to Sangra for a meeting, and I left it all there, it's actually in your folders, there's a, there's a data when it was recorded with the county and with the city. Jose, do you have that by chance?
1981 and it expires in 50 years? 2050? 2050? 2050 years.
50 years, okay, so 2030, about 2030 or so. Okay, we have any questions from the commission? I see none, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I answer the question about the noise study really quickly before we move on?
Yes, that's fine, go ahead, Ms. Claire.
Thank you. So we weren't made aware of a speaker on the entrance, I know that some car washes utilize that, others don't. In studies where we have, and so in this case, we did not model that speaker, in studies where we have been made aware of a speaker and have modeled it, it has not made a significant difference to the overall noise levels. So it is not in this model, if it were added into the model, they would be the same levels. At three feet, a speaker is 62 decibels, and at the entrance, it's already above 62 decibels, so it will be insignificant compared to the existing noise from the car wash.
Ms. Claire, a question for you too. This might be too specific, but in regards to conducting this sound study, what is the, what is the benchmark? Like, what do you reference in regards to coming up with these numbers?
So we have actually taken this system and, and measured it in our facilities. We have what's called reverberation chamber, from there we get what's called the sound power levels of these blowers. We take those sound power levels and that's what the model inputs. And then we, you know, wrap it in the building, we use stuff like topography, the landscaping, everything that's in the area to model this. So it's very specific, and we do have, this system in particular, we have the most amount of data for it, because we were lucky enough to be able to have it in our laboratory. In addition to that, we verify our models by taking confirmation data in the tunnels after we get, after projects get built, we like to go back and confirm our, our levels. So those are the checks and balances we do to ensure that this model is accurate.
All right, thank you. Do we have any questions for Ms. Claire? Mr. Ramirez, question for you, in regards to the walls on the north side and the west side, how, what's the height on that?
There, there is no walls proposed at this point, but if it was required, it would be a three-foot, very similar what you require for a drive-through use for a quick service restaurant. That will mitigate some of the sound, but when there's openings, it won't do anything in that area. We rely itself, ourselves on the, on the actual noise that says that we really, we're not required to do so, but if it's a requirement, then we would have to tweak the site a little bit to make room for a block wall with its footings.
And then I just see, I mean, I see tons of people here tonight, I'm guessing everyone's here for this item, but what's the engagement in regards to the committee, the community itself? How many meetings have you held with the local community?
The, the development permit process does not require any kind of engagement, it's a permitted by right use, it's at a staff level ministerial use, so it doesn't require any type of community engagement. But however, when we did find out that there was a concern from Ms. Yang, I immediately reached out to her and I believe an associate that runs an accounting business, and I asked to meet with him and any concerned residents. At that point, we scheduled a meeting, I met them onsite at McKinley and Find, we took a tour of the interior of the facility, she, she explained to me how she runs her operation. Then we discussed this all outside, all to the noise of the airplanes passing by, helicopters and motorcycles and Dodge Charger with their exhaust systems. So I explained to her that those types of uses and the people involved at that time, that those uses were more detrimental than this car wash could ever be, and that was on a constant basis. So we did have that sort of outreach, I did immediately, once we had a concern, we did reach out even though it wasn't required.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
You got it.
We'll go ahead and open this to public comments, or first go ahead and open this to any individuals who would like to speak in favor of the application. If you're in the chambers, please step up to the podium, state your name and address. And again, this is for individuals who would like to speak in favor of the application. Do we have any individuals on Zoom? If so, please use the raise hand function.
None at this time.
Okay. I see none in favor of the application now, we'll go ahead now is, and we'll open this to the public for any individuals who would like to speak in opposition. If you're in the chambers, please step to the podium, state your name.
Yippo.
Okay.
Yippo.
So what, what I'll do too is, if, for any public comments on this one, again, we're going to keep this to two and a half minutes, and then we'll allow the translation services to translate for two and a half minutes too. So it's going to be a total of five minutes, okay?
Good evening, Christopher Hall, McCormick Barstow, 7647 North Fresno Street, 93720. So I represent Sammy and I represent the property owner, and fortunately for commission tonight, I got a really simple solution. It's been stated that condition of approval of the project as proposed requires my client, the property owner, to agree to the conditions of removal of stalls within and the installation of infrastructure on his property. That's not going to happen. So there's no reason to go any further with this, although I will, because that condition of approval cannot, and he will get up here and speak to you directly and will not be met, and so the project as proposed is annolity. You're going to hear from an auditorium full of people today. I'm going to be brief in my comments because the law is clear on this, and I'll just talk briefly about the law, but the human factor is what's really important. You're going to hear a lot about that, about the good that's being done by Revendell. The fact has been mentioned numerous times that this is an industrial zone. It is. It was not at the time that the building was created, it was not at the time that a office use was put to it. In 2016, without notice to the property owner, because property owners didn't need to be notified, there was sweeping changes that rezoned this property and made it light industrial. Had that been known, and had notice actually been received, the property owner would have come and stated his case and explained the unique situation. That was not done. CEQA, they are making use of a categorical exemption, it's a Class 32 exemption that requires certain things to be met, and then there's exceptions even after those things have been met. The, the things that need to be met.
You're fine.
Sorry, was that a sneeze or somebody told me to slow down?
No, you're fine.
Anyway, here there is going to be impacts, it can be reasonably demonstrated, there's impacts to noise, there's impacts to traffic, there's impacts to circulation, there's impacts to, to parking. With that, you cannot make use of a categorical exemption. But let's go a step third, further. When there are unusual circumstances, the, it's an exception to the exemption and you do not get to use the categorical exemption, you have to go through the CEQA process. And that CEQA process is designed for exactly what it's doing here, protect the public. And it requires that environmental analysis be performed, and in this case, a full-blown EIR, in my opinion, would be performed, but it removes it from the purview of a categorical exemption and makes the applicant go through that process and analyze the impacts. We have a very unique situation here, and I'll, I'll close, in that we have a very sensitive, an important community group. The law laid out my letter, and everybody has that in their pack, and I won't restate everything that's in my letter, makes very clear that when you have that unique situation, the categorical exemption is not available, CEQA has to be complied with, it was not done here, and I'll just close again by saying, a condition of approval is not going to be met, this whole project is annolity, and with that, I'll invite Jerry up to speak on that, he is the property owner.
Thank you.
And I'm available for questions if you have any later.
Thank you. Let's please have Mr. Jerry.
Jerry, I did land noise. Appears we have a lot of anxious objectors. My name is Jerry Marissou, I'm co-owner of Airport Village, which abuts this proposed car wash. Airport Village was designed and planned and developed as an integrated commercial office center with shared parking ingress and egress. Developing this car wash completely negates that premise and, in essence, basically precludes the use of our property. As Chris stated, we were never notified, I was never notified by the developer, nor the town of Fresno, excuse me, city of Fresno, that this car wash was in process. Seeing as how they are using our property, taking parking spaces away, totally redesigning the, the property, it, it seems to me someone should have got with us and talked about this. It's patently not legal for them, and it's not going to happen, they're not going to use our property to take away spaces. As a matter of fact, when this rezoning took place, the citywide rezoning took place in 2016, I believe, we were not notified. At that time, we were zoned M1P, and a car wash would have been, have required a conditional use permit. Does that mean I have to quit?
One more minute.
No, you're fine.
And had we been notified at that time, that would have given us a chance to, to argue against rezoning. Because of all the negative impacts that Chris mentioned, I want to make one point before I step down. When I look at Section 15-1301, purpose of the employment districts of which, of which the light industrial district is one, Part B states that provide the appropriate location of businesses that may have the potential to generate off-site impacts while providing to ensure compatibility and use in form with existing and planned uses. This certainly does that, do that, because it totally creates impacts for our property that, like I mentioned earlier, would make it almost unusable for any further uses. We have worked with the community, this was in 85 when it was developed, when we took the property over, there was a business machine operation, there was a office supply, there were offices, there was a sandwich store that fit in with the neighborhood. With that, been of big boxes and the computer age, those uses fizzled out. So anyway, thank you very much for your time, and I completely object to this project, and I am very upset that we were not notified of this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good, good evening, my name is, but before I do that. My name is Hemi Li Yang, but Paul, it's too hard to call me my name, so he called me stem. Paul is your name?
Paul.
So I do run an adult daycare, but it's not your, your usual adult daycare. So this is a very special population, and Paul has been with me for the last 20 years. All of my trainings and degrees and fancy degrees, they are telling me I have to teach, I'm very emotional, because I work with them, they're like, they are my families and my kids for the last 20 years, so I'm sorry about being emotional. For the last 20 years, I was supposed to teach them skills so they could be independent. I was supposed to teach them hygiene, the things that we take for granted. But over the last 20 years, I learned, they have taught me that they don't want anything fancy, they don't want the clothing, brand name clothing. All they want is to be fed, loved, protected, and give me respect, my routine. With this car wash coming to their environment, it is going to deny them their rights, we are going to deny them the environment. We are going to deny them the environment because we are imposing, we're changing their routine. And this is why I'm so passionate about it. And I have... They wanted to come because they wanted you to see their faces and not just clients. They're not my clients. They have become my families. And they have no voices. I'm their only voices. And so I'm going to stand up here and I'm going to continue to stand up for them. And I have two parents here tonight. And I want to have...
My name is Minza or Mayur. My last name is Yang.
......
Thank you. Let's go ahead and may you please translate that, please.
I'm going to try my best to do her justice, okay?
Thank you.
So I am a parent of a disabled child who is part of the program at this facility. And I'm here to share my perspective on this new facility. I feel that it is not safe to the life of my child if this facility, if this car wash is to be approved. The patrons of the daycare center are those that have disabilities like asthma, coughing. My child has seizures. And having the car wash there is going to pose a safety risk for all of these patrons, including my child. This program is a very good program because it teaches basic skills to individuals with disabilities who may not be able to learn these skills on their own. And especially for us elderly parents who, when we are no longer of this world, we can have some confidence that our children can look after themselves with these basic skills. With this facility, my child and the patrons of this facility need a space that is free of gas or fuel, fumes, of garbage, of criminal activity, so that they can be safe. And with anywhere between 100 to 500 customers per day, you know, it's going to pose a very big risk for my child and these patrons. I believe that this program is going to help to extend the life of my child, as mentioned before, because of the basic skills, basic life skills that they are taught there. I do not support this business. I am happy that when my child graduated with a bachelor's degree, I asked her if she wanted to live with me or somewhere else. And my child said that they wanted to learn other skills, learn English, so that they can be independent once I'm gone and I'm no longer here to support them. I ask that the environmental studies also include the impact of noise or whatever the impacts are to patrons with disabilities as well.
Okay. Let's go ahead. I'll give you another 10 seconds, Miss.
Okay. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Do we have another individual who'd like to speak in opposition? Again, please remember, I'm going to go ahead and give two and a half minutes for the individuals to speak, and then we'll offer two and a half minutes for translation services too.
I would like to request that we split up the translation to, if you want to keep it at five minutes, if we go back and forth, it's much easier to translate. And I want to make sure that I'm doing them justice. So we're going to try a different approach with this one.
That's fine. That's fine. Do we need a vote on that or okay? Okay, we'll go ahead and give five minutes for each speaker, okay? Who needs translation services?
My name is Mi Li. I do not support the business. My child has seizures and she does not follow directions well. When she wants to leave, she just leaves. When she wants to stay, she just stays. And if that facility is there, it poses a risk to her safety. She is not able to communicate well. And when she is upset, she just runs off. She has no sense of fear of uncalming traffic or anyone around her. So I reached out to Xiamy and her program, and they've been able to help her and keep her safe? Due to her seizures, I am afraid that the fumes coming from the business, gas fumes, is going to cause her to have difficulty breathing and be a risk to her health. I am absolutely against this project because there is not enough space. Due to my child's condition, I am there with her every day. And I would really like for this application to not be approved. I am concerned that when my child has a seizure and she falls to the ground, I cannot help her. And so I've taken her to this program that can. She also has a fear of unfamiliar places. And I fear that she may not want to get out of the car if she sees an unfamiliar scene. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any... The next individual? Yeah, you know what? Can we please, we'll go ahead and take a five-minute recess? Let's do a five-minute recess. It's currently 7:31. We'll go ahead and resume at 7:37, okay? Thank you. Okay? Thank you. If we can, let's please all have a seat. Let's please all have a seat. We'll go ahead and resume public input. Again, this is for individuals who like to speak in opposition. For those individuals who need translation services, we're going to go ahead and have a running clock of five minutes. Please state your name, address, and you have five minutes, please.
Hi, my name is Tu, and I'm the office manager for Rivendell at forty-nine twenty-seven East McKinley. And these are some of our individuals. And Vang here would like something to say.
Hi, my name is Vang. I would like no car wash. Please, please don't build a car wash. Keep me safe. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, guys. All right. That's just some of our clients, and I will say my piece. Thank you, guys. You guys can sit down. So I am the office manager. I go every morning, early in the morning, open the office. And I make sure that on the way to our office building, it's safe because we do serve those that are individuals that is in the underserved, special, in the unique community. Most of our individuals, they have unsteady gates. As you can see, some of them, they could fall easily. When they get off the bus, on the way walking to the program, they could fall. So I want to make sure it's safe at first. That's why I come open. We also have those that's in wheelchair and some that are actually blind. So what I do, I come, make sure that everything's safe. And with the car wash in place, I know that they're going to take up all the space all the way to our front doors, meaning that we're going to park the buses to the side, which is a longer walk. And some of them cannot walk that far without any assistance. Other than that, another thing is I know that they say the noise is going to be low. But it's not even just the loudness of the noise. It's all those noises altogether that can and will cause stress to our individuals. In turn of that, they will run. Like you hear some of the parents, we do have individuals that will run and not care for their own safety. They could build a rail, they could build a wall. Our clients can get over wall, over rails. And when that happens, cars not going to see them. Chances of getting hit is great. Other than that, other than that, you know, like Sam said, it is pretty personal. We do, me and my other staff, it is like a family to us. Parking for us is not really an issue. It's the safety of our individuals. We want to make sure that they come to us safely, leave back to the family safe and sound. With a car in there, with a car wash there with all the noises, even though it's not loud, all different type of noise going at once. I've been through car washes. People bump up their music very loud. Sometimes you can't hear yourself think too. And I'm pretty sure some of our people here have the same experience. With that in place, it will cause stress. It will cause some of the clients to run. They do not look where they're running to. They do not look what's coming to them. They will just run out to the street. And that's just what I like to say.
Thank you.
Thank you, anyway. Good evening, Chair Vang and members of the planning commission. I introduce my son and I talk about the issue. I was resident of Fresno County for over forty years. I worked for Fresno County Social Services for over twenty-eight years, providing services to the population like this that you see in front of you here. I retired. Anyway, before I speak, I want you all to put yourself in that position. You put yourself, you close your eye, and you put yourself in a parent of a kid, a child, a boy, a girl like this. And your child have epilepsy, seizures, hearing problems. And you take your child to the facility every day, every morning. And you expect your child to come back home safe every day. And with the proposed project, my question to you, will you be, you feel safe to allow or to take your child over there? And you work, will you think during the day that when my child at that facility is safe or not? So put yourself in that position and think that you are the parents of one of these kids. This case needs safety. Need care that nobody care, nobody can provide, nobody at home can provide. And this case of refugees, I don't want to see them to be refugee again from place to places due to feeling unsafe, feel not safe in a particular area or location. And Rivendell has established for twenty years. I know them, I worked with them side by side for twenty years. And in addition to that, this kid do not speak English. Rivendell provide them their special, their cultural and language appropriate services for them. You can tell they speak English a little bit. But very important is their parents. When the kids go, they want to make sure that the kids are safe. They make sure that nobody will drag them into their car and even a little chain and try to take it out from their neck. And thank you for your time. But again, put yourself in a position that you have a kid, you have a son, a boy, a brother, a sister in this position. What would you think? Will you feel safe to allow your kid to go to such an environment? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The individual in the back raising her hand. I'll let you speak next after this individual. Is that fine? Okay.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Sheng Yang, and I'm one of the tenants at the adjacent property, the subject property. I have, I oppose to the construction of the car wash. I'm not only a business here alone, but I have associates standing here. We have hundreds of clients. There's three points I want to make. First, we are financial literacy teaching to community, underserved communities. And we have clients who come in and we hold classes. And the establishment of the car wash during the construction and after the construction, the noises level and also the traffic will disturb the underserved on the students during the class session. That's point number one. Point number two, the construction of the car wash will tear down the parking in front, which is not just ordinary parking, but it's a handicap parking ten feet in front of my office. And the establishment of the car wash will tear down that handicap parking. And the next available parking for my disabled and disability client will be three hundred yards away. Point number three, I want you to think about it. If a business come to an area and the business, the new business will be growing, but the existing business at that property will be dying or out of business. And is it worth it to consider the approval? Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Let's have the gentleman in the back. Thank you for your patience. Please state your name and address, and you have two and a half minutes.
Thank you very much. My name is Joe Lenigan. I live at one-one-three-nine-one North Armstrong, Clovis. I've worked with Rivendell since July of last year, and they've been wonderful to work with. I see them serving our community in amazing ways. Rivendell serves disabled adults from ages twenty-two through seventy. Rivendell meets the needs of disabled adults that are not met elsewhere. This is a unique setting which has been built and developed to meet the needs of our special population with very diverse needs. Our community is being very well-served by Rivendell. I have a background in education. I taught music in the public schools for thirty-nine years. Students with special needs were often mainstreamed into many of my classes. From my experience, the core to success is a controlled environment. Rivendell provides a controlled environment which is secure and consistent from minute to minute and day to day. When the environment change is due to noise or traffic, anything can trigger behavior and the progress of these disabled adults. This includes running, imploding, or even becoming violent. These clients with their unique and special needs must have a controlled and consistent environment. Fresno has a great thing in Rivendell. Please don't change something that's great. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Please state your name, address, and you have two and a half minutes, miss.
Martha Delatorre, forty-nine twenty-seven East McKinley. And I am a parent. I am opposing the car wash. And I will make a very easy example. Try to fit yourself, if you're in a wheelchair, try to fit yourself in a regular stall, in a very narrow stall. Just think about squeezing your wheelchair, flipping around, getting onto a toilet, vice versa, getting back out. Think about, how are you going to do that? Nowhere in the plan that I see, how is a bus going to come in and out, multiple buses that do our drop-offs? How is, how are they going to get in and out when you have a car wash that opens up at seven o'clock? And potentially, you're going to have several, lots of cars there. Now, they keep talking about the noise. Autistic children, autistic adults, they are all affected by routine. They may be used to the traffic that is currently there. But are you really going to tell me that the loud noise of not one, but several vacuum cleaners is not going to affect them? All day long, they will not have a minute of peace. They will not. That means my time is up?
No, you still have one minute, miss.
Okay. So here and again, that's only one factor for noise. Two factors is all the cars coming in and out. You've got the radio, you've got music going, you've got people yelling, you've got the folks who are conducting the car wash yelling. I myself, I'm a monthly pass holder. But I can never take my child with me because she's fearful of the noise and the surroundings of the car wash. That being said, Rivendell is a great community that Fresno County has. Let's continue to support it because all these adults with disabilities want is to be included, be accepted. And that is what Rivendell offers them. If we don't have Rivendell, then where are they going to go? This is only a portion of what Rivendell supports. Thank you.
Thank you, miss. Please state your name and address, and you have two and a half minutes.
Good evening. I'm Stephanie Lee, and my address is eleven-twenty-five North Coventry, Clovis, California. Good evening. I am a community member and I also a service provider and a colleague to Rivendell Community Center. I want to speak on behalf of the individual or the participate, the community, I call them community member, family member to Rivendell, is that I oppose the car wash. Simply that I am a car wash member and hold a monthly membership. And I know the level of noise, the level of people coming and going, and the music that they play. And I also have been to Rivendell, and I know the distance between that parking lot and the office space. Knowing that, I learned that Rivendell have one hundred and twenty-some members. And as a service provider, I'm a credential school psychologist. I work for children from the age of five to twenty-two. And that's why I transitioned this individual into program. I wrote those individual program, individual plans for them to make sure that they transition into a safe, productive individual program. And with that, this individual have each unique condition that that's why they are in those program. Doesn't mean that they do not have the right to live their life to the fullest and with safe, respected, and continue to thrive in their own way. So I just want to say, without the car wash, they will continue to thrive and continue to do that. But with the car wash, that would definitely interrupt and would negative impact their individual lifestyle. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioner. My name is Parkau Lee. I work for another adult day healthcare. It's location at East Kings Canyon and Vineyard. The reasons I come here tonight is because wherever there is a car wash next to our facility, it makes a lot of noise. It's very, you know, smell bad, and it's not very good for our participant. But what we cannot say anything is because the car wash is there before our adult day care is there. So I come here tonight, I say no car wash there because the safety is not the car wash. The safety is the customer who come and wash the car there. And second thing is this Rivendell, the facility, is been helping our Asian community a lot because they donate for us to have a meeting there all the time after hour. And the reasons I come here is I say no car wash. Thank you, Commissioner.
Do we have any other individuals, please?
Hi, good evening. My name is Terry Malang, eighteen-eighteen East Decatur, Fresno, California. As you can see in here this evening, these touching testimonials must offer something to you. As you can see, the Rivendell Community Center serves special needs children, handicapped, seniors, and families of veterans. The addition of the car wash will inhibit the center's ability to adequately serve the community in its present capacity, especially with the two-lane backup pollution, noise pollution. Please consider these in your decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Lee Vang. I'm Ms. Ms.'s older brother. I'm also licensed and certified under California's ARF, which is deal with this kind of, this population, the minority. I'm not here to oppose their plans of business or even Rivendell's. I'm not here to oppose their plans of business or even Rivendell's, but I'm a, so I'm a advocate for those individual. I've learned through books, school, classes. When I finished, I thought, I was cocky. I thought maybe I'm going to, I'm the expert. No, actually I'm not. They are the expert of this field. Over 20 years, I've been working with Rivendell. I only learn from them, that through the books. And sometime I have 50 students at once and I have 50 set of mind, 50 completely different individuals that I have to learn, each one of them, through medication, behaviors, anything you need them. And I'm sorry that I had to say no to the car washer. I have nothing against them and I apologize for that. But over the years, I became myself to this kind of, this minute population that we have and deserve. And I want, I want them to feel free and have the freedom. Okay? I've been working for this field for 20 years. I retired when I was 48, I think, 40 years old. I retired from them and, but I still, they're still my student and friends. Over those years, I've learned a lot of things from them and it's not safe for them. Please consider, please. We have to live with them. They have to live with us. There are very minutes, there are very little goods among us and they are our people, they are our children, our friends. Thank you for listening.
Hello, my name is Daisy Contreras. I am a pastor in Dalbre, and I've been working with Rivendell. I started working with them because I really believed in the mission of the company as a whole. We're opposing the car wash, not because we don't use the car washes, because I'm pretty sure everyone here, we use car washes and they're effective. But there's lots of car washes, just like you guys looked at the demographics, how many Starbucks are within radius of each other? How many special needs companies are like this, serving underprivileged populations? We're in a position, the company is serving underprivileged people, they don't have a voice for themselves. And if you were to, the picture really don't do justice where the car wash would go. A lot of our clients go out and our coworkers, they walk them outside, they get outside in the day and they walk. So if the car wash were to go there, there would be no room for them to go walk out safely because the concern is you cannot go outside. Right now they have room where, you know, they said, oh, we don't need all that parking space. That's not true. Yes, cars are not parking there all day. They're coming up, people are getting dropped off. But our clients are going out there to stretch their legs, to get a breath of fresh air without being worried that they're going to go any further because they have plenty of space. When I went today to the property and looked at how far the car wash would go, I want you to imagine that other business, the tax business, the car wash is basically, they're not going to have, they're not going to be able to be visible on traffic because a car wash is almost going to be up against their, their like walkway of how far it's going to go out. On this side, they're going to, the car wash is going to end where the front of Rivendell's doors start. How is that like, it doesn't make sense for us to have special needs, you know, clients that are going to be, they're not going to feel safe to get dropped off. There's no way logistic reasons, how is the bus going to coming out? Right now, are they coming through one way, get out through another way? We can say, okay, no big deal, but that means displacing a lot of people because they're not going to feel safe. I feel there's a lot of more locations that would be adequate for a car wash to go for displacing a company that serves the underprivileged population, which we need more companies to serve underprivileged populations. Yes, we have lots of car washes. Yes, we have lots of Starbucks's, but not many people that can say, I have a client for 20 years. Not many of us are going to be tipping our bar of stuff for, we're going to go 20 years through Starbucks. Yes, it's great, we'll find another one. You're not going to find a lot of Sammies, you're not going to find a lot of people like two that are going to be that nice and kind to make an impact in these people's life. They don't have a voice for themselves. They need someone to advocate for them. So we are that voice. They came here today to show you guys, yes, business wise, and you know, it might check off a lot of boxes of car wash, but it's going to displace a lot of people that need these services. They wouldn't be able to find them other places because there's a lot of programs, they're not going to service this population with their language barriers. So I would just hope you guys take that into consideration today. Thank you guys for your time.
Hi, my name is Roberta Collison, 6655 North Fresno Street. I come to you as a community member and I'm also a special education teacher. So I've worked with students of this population. Now they are transitioning into their adult lives. So I understand the needs and the frustrations that I hear as well today. I won't talk much about that. You've heard plenty about how this affects the safety, this affects their, it impacts their behavior, it disrupts their daily lives, it disrupts the structure that is so vital to maintaining course for these people. But what I will say is that by, if you say yes to this and you implement this car wash, you are going to be excluding people. You're moving backwards by excluding people. I've dedicated my life to be an advocate for people who don't have voices. And if you say yes to this car wash, you're turning your back on a population that cannot speak for themselves. You're turning your back on hard work that Sammy and many of her people have put decades into. We, as people who work with students and people with disabilities, we do this not because we get a fat check at the end of the day or because, you know, we all drive Maserati. It's because we truly care about these people who cannot speak for themselves. So I implore you to think about the lives that you would be impacting if you say yes to this decision. It's not just the people you see in front of you, it's the family and the communities that they represent. Thank you.
Do we have any other individuals? Gentlemen in the back, please go ahead and approach the podium, state your name, address, and you have three, two and a half minutes.
All right. Cheng Yang, 6318 East Dwight Wade, Fresno, California. So anyways, yeah, I'm also a school teacher, as you guys can clearly see. And you know, I serve various students. I'm not going to go into that, but I am going to talk about Rivendell. Rivendell is a special place for the Mon community for many reasons. And I know earlier somebody mentioned that, you know, if you go on any given weekend, there'd be hundreds of cars there and it's out of compliance. And it's probably because, can you hear me? Because honestly, very few of us would decide to do things out of compliance in honor of these. And sometimes, as you guys all are aware, being a high school teacher all these years, some of these leave high school without ever knowing what a prom is. Sometimes they have to take that to consideration and do things beyond what is expected on weekends in order to serve their human needs. They don't expect to be treated special. They just want to share the same experience as all of us. And so if by having 200 to 300 cars on a given weekend, being out of compliance to serve the needs of guys like Vang, what's up, Vang? You remember me, huh? What's up, Vang? But honestly though, these are not clients. This is Fresno. You know, Jerry Mayor Dyer said it best when he said one Fresno. Earlier and Timmy said that she was their voice, but actually it's you guys. Be that voice. Be that voice and let the city council members know, let the mayor know, let everybody know that you're going to be here to fight, not for the clients, but for Fresno. And that's what Fresno is, a place where it's very inclusive. It's basically in Mayor Dyer's welcoming or opening speech. So thank you for your time. One of my goals as a teacher is to find replacements in those seats, but more importantly, I want to make sure that this city is where they, those seats are the seats that they really want to be in when they become adults. Thank you for your time.
Do we have any other individuals in the chambers?
My name is Wai Ying. Address is 388 Ashcroft, Clovis, California, 93619. I'm one of the worker that send all these individual to the program. Believe it or not, we only have one that serve Asian program, Asian in the, in the community. And I heard people talks about a lot of stuff, but if I have all day, I can tell you the process, how we, how these individual gets to the program. So what I do is, my job is, I don't pick program for them. I'm not saying Rivendell is great. I'm not saying any other program is not. All I'm saying is, our job is to send them to minimum of three programs and have them pick the best program or the one that they picked, the one that they wanted to go. And I can give you experience where I sent clients to program where they go in there and they look everywhere, the environment, and parents will be the one that behind them and said, okay, this is a good place to go or it's not. Or that individual him or herself will also say the same thing. When I go back to the office, they'll call me and they say, Mr. Yang, that's not the program I wanted to go to because of this and that. And the process of placing them in different programs is, is not easy. And when somebody said, I only wanted to go to a program that has some Mon speaking per se, then that's the only one in town for now. So please consider and maybe another business, but not the car wash. That's all I can say. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, miss.
So my name is Donna Harrison. I live at 434 Villa in Clovis and I work at 1617 West Shaw in Fresno. I consider myself a friend of Sammy's and I sincerely support the Rivendell operators as they support and provide services, one of a kind services that many of us will never ever have to experience. To children, adults, the elderly, and the family of veterans. So I'm not going to tell you anything that's new. Everybody here has already said everything that I had on my nice little neat written list and I've scratched it off. So everybody's told you everything about the car wash. I don't have a problem with the car wash. I do have a problem with the gentleman standing up here and saying, and I beg to differ with his opinion, that there's no significant difference or impact to Rivendell. Really? Do you see all these people here tonight? There's an impact to Rivendell, sir. So, Mr. Car Wash, there's an impact to Rivendell. I will tell you that I have a relative who had a Down syndrome child. So she was about the age of this young lady over here, had a great career living in Atlanta, terrific job, driving fancy cars, making all kinds of money, and she had a Down syndrome child. Completely changed her life, of course, because you can see how these parents love their children. So none of you will probably ever experience what my cousin experienced. She gave up her job and she dedicated her entire life to this child, who I will tell you has lived to be over 40 years old. It's unbeknown to people with Down syndrome to live that long. Still, my dad was a big mean construction worker, never had a good word to say about most people, but when Haley, who was named after Haley's comet, she would walk in the door and she would look at my dad and she'd go straight to him. And she had this crazy little watch that she got at Burger King and you could press a button and it would say, a baby's got to do what a baby's got to do. And my dad's heart just would melt. So I hope that none of you ever have to experience and go through what these people go through, but, and I know my time's up, but it takes a special person to do what Sammy's doing. I mean a really special person. I don't think that I could do it. And it takes a special person like my cousin was. So the pressure is really on, as some gentleman just said, the pressure is really on all of you. You've got to make a decision. What are you going to do? Are you going to ante up and be the people and the person that you have dedicated yourself to be as politicians, to provide services for these children? I don't know of another facility in Fresno. Maybe there is one. I can tell you where a lot of the car washes are because I take care of my car and I wash it, but I can't tell you where another facility is that Sammy runs or anybody else runs in Fresno. So that's, that's my story and please take it into consideration.
Do we have any other individuals in the chambers? Do we have individuals on Zoom who would like to speak in opposition?
No hands at this time.
All right, we're going to go ahead and close.
There's one more, I'm sorry.
You're fine. Go ahead and let's please let the individual speak. State your name, address, and you have two and a half minutes.
Hi, my name is Aaron Krikorian, 1715 North Fine Avenue. We are owner occupants of our building just north of the corner. We submitted a, an opposition letter that should be in your exhibit package. And the general concerns, although it was stated that we didn't provide anything new or any new concerns, over the last 41 years, the neighborhood has changed here and, you know, it is very busy on this corner. And in your packet, I provided you pictures of flooding issues that we have, even though the car wash may not, may reuse water. We do experience considerable flooding on the corner, which is a concern whenever it rains. And I don't know if the car wash would add to that, but in addition to that also, we've seen an influx of a lot of foot traffic and some of the folks in our complex have concerns of additional foot traffic in our business areas, which typically lead to people, you know, rummaging through our dumpsters, solicitations. And I alluded to in my letter, we had one instance where somebody took a bath in our flower bed during normal business hours. So, you know, general concern is, you know, the presence of another business that brings in more traffic may lead to more foot traffic. And in our professional association over here, it's not good for business. So I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Do we have any other individuals who would like to speak in opposition on Zoom?
Yes. That's the same one. Sorry. You put his hand up again.
Thank you. My name is Leon Chirapelli. I submitted opposition papers. My office is located behind the previous speaker at 1795 North Fine. So the driveway that would go into this car wash on the north side of it of Fine is two drives immediately south of my office. I am the office right on Fine Avenue. We have had many flood occasions there, the worst of which was probably four years ago and it flooded our entire complex. There had to be at least 24 inches of water at the corner and up where my driveway into my office. my office sits, we could not get out of the complex. It was above the door level of the cars in the lot. So we stayed there until about eight o'clock at night till it dissipated. We've had this several times, not as bad as when it completely encircled our lot. If you look at the, if you would look at the vicinity map, the legend that shows the car wash right on that northwest corner and then go to the next office complex north of that, that's where we are. Now, it said that this is an industrial zone property. We have industrial related businesses across the street, east of us on Fine. Those are all concrete tilt up buildings with roll up doors on the south side. Very little noise. I've been there since 1988 is when my wife and I purchased the building. So I'm very familiar with the traffic patterns and the noise levels. And I, I got a little kick out of the fact that when the, one of the presenters on behalf of the applicant says, but for the chargers that go by. Well, you also have Mustangs. And in any event, that's the reality of it. In other words, when you talk about noise, it's not just the noise of the car wash, it's the amount of increased traffic volume. Also, there's a charter school, I think it's a high school, that sits north of my office on the, on the west side of Fine. We have a lot of student pedestrian traffic that goes there. There are no sidewalks along Fine Avenue. The kids walk in the street. They really have an issue when it's flooding. First of all, they probably have someone drop them off, but if they do walk, they have to be up on our lot in order to do it, in order to get to the school. But I think that's the concerns that I would have the planning commission take a deeper look at. Of course, this all comes up on very short notice because of the rules that apply to this type of application. But I would like you to take a real hard look at the flooding issue and also the increased traffic issue. And there's been enough said about the business that's being run in that parking lot, in the immediate area of the car wash, that it's really a disaster if this car wash goes in there for those businesses. And I thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Do we have any other individuals on Zoom?
It looks like a no. That should be it.
Is that a yes?
Sorry, there's no more.
Okay. Not a problem. We're going to go ahead and close public comment. We'll allow the applicant, if you can. There's a lot of concerns that were brought up by the community. If you can address those concerns, please.
We'll try our best. There was quite a few there, so. First thing is, is the use is permitted. We've reiterated that. We took a look at your general plan and it indicates that the intended purpose of the IL district is intended to provide areas as identified by the general plan for a diverse range of light industrial uses, including limited manufacturing, processing, research and development, fabrication, utility equipment, service yards, wholesaling and warehouse, and the list goes on and on. Car washes are considered one of those permitted uses. When the city of Fresno redid the citywide zoning classification in 2016, it considered this under the environmental impact report that it had to produce. That EIR stated that these types of uses are permitted by right. They're not detrimental to, to the area or to surrounding land uses, therefore didn't require a special use permit or a conditional use permit. So we took that into consideration. We took that too hard and we invested money in this property to get that going because of those specific lockdown rules and guidelines and, and planning documents that state that. So is it permitted by right? Yes. Does it meet every criteria for the general plan? It does. Does it meet CEQA, Class 32 exemption? Yes, it does. It is not a unique site. It was planned for, it was environmentally researched through the environmental impact report, which made it a permitted right. So there is no question whether it would classify as a Class 32 exemption. It's under five acres. That was one of the key things. The second thing we needed to cover is, is security. We heard a lot about security and safety. That is, that would happen with any business that goes there. The issue is Rivendell has a security issue if they cannot control it. That is a concern to us as well in that we have people that will be visiting the car wash and if someone runs out, that's a security for us, that's a concern for us and a liability issue as well. It sounds like you have a security issue and it's possibly a staffing issue with the facility in that if doors are open, the day I visited, doors were wide open. Anyone could walk in and out. So any use that goes in that's commercial, industrial, it's going to generate noise. Even if it's a bakery, it's going to generate noise. It will all do that. So at what point do we say we, we have a full use of our property? I mean, it's, it was purchased five years ago, four or five years ago with the intent of development. The proprietor should have that right to be able to do that. So that's, that is a concern. The third issue we have is that a lot of this has come up with traffic and, and circulation. As I stated initially in my presentation, I didn't want to address it too so, so strongly, but there's a secondary use that the planning division as well as code enforcement has to take a look at, at that site. That Rivendell Event Center is not just for the Asian community. If you got on Facebook, you could see it's available for weddings, any, any kind of events. In fact, the owner reached out to Rivendell with the potential of renting the facility and he was presented this screenshot, which we will distribute to you, the commissioners. They indicated that they can have parking and availability for up to 700 people at this facility. That doesn't sound like an Asian prom or anything like that. That is a facility that's being used as an event center, as a banquet center that serves alcohol for, in the community. The concern is that building is an I occupancy. I occupancy means that it's an institutional facility. The event center is an entirely different occupancy. It's an A occupancy, which is assembly. You're having 700 people in a facility that does not have a use permit, does not have security, does not have the permission of the planning department, the building department, ADA accessibility, and they're concerned about ADA. Internally, it has not met ADA, which is Americans Disability Act. You are, you are having 700 patrons at one weekend there for an event or a catering service. You have a full bar there. All that was done without permission of the city of Fresno. That is something that code enforcement needs to follow up in. I request that the planning department follow up on because the traffic is a non-issue based on that. If they were concerned about traffic and noise, that they would have addressed their issues as well. What they state is there are plenty of parking. There is an actuality, even with our site as it currently is vacant, there's about 63 stalls there. We would take away about 10 stalls for our use, but we would, our use does not require any additional parking stalls, so it's not affected. Where are those 700 people parking? The, the shared agreement requires that they provide all parking onsite. The attorney was so strict on saying that it doesn't meet the intent of the shared agreement or the, the spirit of the agreement. Neither does the, neither does the parking situation. So that's something that needs to be addressed as well. That is a concern for us. What exactly does Rivendell want to see there? When I spoke to Ms. Yang, I say, I gave her an example of other uses that were permitted there. She indicated if you don't do an office there or some small, I'm going to deny it all the, every time. As a property owner, at what point do you, are you able, is your property rendered unusable and unfeasible? A significant amount of money was spent on this property to develop a commercial or industrial use that's consistent with the general plan and existing zoning. That's what we presented here before you today. Unfortunately, there's a lot of sentiment, there's a lot of emotion, and I respect that. I have two nephews with severe autism as well. I totally respect every aspect of that. But we want to be a neighbor and work with the, the adjacent property owner. They have to understand that this is an industrial zone district as zoned in 2016. It is a permitted use by right. It would never have even come to the forefront had not the surveyors been out there and Ms. Yang approached them and said, what are you guys doing? We're surveying the property for a car wash. That was a defining factor that brought this to the attention. Other than that, this use would have been permitted by right. It would have gone on, got building permits and been under construction. It, it has that right. So that is my concern. The other last one thing I want to point is they talked about this would restrict their loading and unloading. Where is the loading zone? Anytime you have an assisted care facility or any daycare camp or anything, you're required by law to have an actual loading zone. All they have is delineated perpendicular parking stalls. When they bring their buses into the facility, they occupy and utilize 10, 15 stalls, therefore limiting the number of parking stalls available for the use or any of the adjacent tenants. That is a concern as well and that has to be reviewed also. So we ask you to reconsider, to consider this and you have a planning staff that is an urban design professionals. They vetted this, they reviewed it with us, went back and forth with us. Jennifer had an opportunity to look at this as well. It meets all the checkpoints for the car wash. So we ask you to consider this and we also have additional discussion that we presented by Jennifer Clark. Is there any questions for me?
Do you have any questions for the applicant? Yeah, go ahead.
So you had stated that you purchased the property five years ago when you had originally purchased it. What were your plans? Was it a car wash to begin with or is that something that?
Five years ago, the intent was, we actually worked with a coffee QSR, a coffee shop. That, that plan fell through. That would have been a drive-through as well. That's an ideal location coming from the airport. McKinley Avenue is very limited. I mean, it has Carl's Jr.'s and a few others, Wendy's, things like that, but a car wash is needed, a coffee shop is needed. We tried that and it just fell through with the, with the potential buyer. And we would have been in the same situation where there was the drive-through, the queuing, the speaker boxes, the people ordering loud coffee and the decibrings of the speaker boxes, that would have created concerns that Ms. Yang expressed as well. The other option is we can do warehousing, we can do welding shops, we can do car repair. Those are also going to present concerns, but those are all viable uses in that zone district.
And with the design for the car wash, how, how did it come across to come to this particular design?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that.
How did we come up with this design for the car wash?
We went through the preliminary review process with the city of Fresno. There's a DRC, is what they call it in Clovis and Fresno, I think it's called the same thing, Development Review Committee. It, it's a cursory review and involves all the staff. You present a, a, a design concept. That design concept is vetted to all the different in-house and outside agencies, FM, FCD, FID, Caltrans, Clovis Unified School, District Planning, Building Engineering. All those have an opportunity to weigh in on this. At that point, you were called in for an informal meeting and they're presented with a list of comments. Those comments provide you with the setbacks. So the comment that the building was all the way up to the sidewalk and didn't allow for room, that's, that's false as well. If you look at the design, design of the project and the municipal code and planning requirements, it's required to maintain a 15-foot setback, which it does. That's 15 feet from the back of the sidewalk. So it's, there's plenty of room there where we're going to do landscaping. So that's how we came up with the concept. After a meeting with staff, we got all the specifics regarding lot coverage, design, architectural elements, permitted uses, number of vacuum stations, number of parking, where ingress and egress, the tunnels, where the noise is going to dissipate. We discussed all of that prior to submitting any formal application.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to close any kind of public comment. We'll bring it back to the commission. I do want to make a comment, but I think, you know, there's, I think there's a couple of things that we need to really revisit, I think ultimately. So ultimately, there's a couple of things we need to revisit. I think, you know, I don't want to make any kind of decision right now. I want to be fair to everybody that's involved. Most importantly, there's a couple of things that I do want to bring up. I mean, you have this parking permit agreement that was established back in 1981, right? I'm a firm believer that things should be a living document, right? I mean, I wasn't even born in 1981, right? And I'm sure electrical cars wasn't available at that time too. So there's certain things that we definitely need to address. One of the key issue too is the attorney brought up, well, is the property owner, is their property owner, are they, do they need the approval from the property owner too? So there's, there's a couple of things I would like the staff to do some research on. I know, Mr. Ramirez, you know, you're trying to be an entrepreneur, right? And I appreciate that. I really do appreciate it. I'm in finance myself. I work with a bunch of business owners and, you know, certain times, things make financial sense, but sometimes you have to make sure you take into consideration common sense too. Okay? And I know you preach that you want to be a good neighbor, but before you establish anything at all, you know, you, it's by right, you have to build that according to your statements. And I do hope that you see the community outreach today where they're, I mean, they're here in full, full force. It's 8:31 on a Wednesday evening. And I hope that you take this to consideration. When you do, we decide, if we decide to continue this moving forward. But, you know, I don't like, I don't like when individuals, when you try to build your case, I don't, I never want to see business owners attack one another, making accusations in regards to you have a lack of security and things like that. Because at the end of the day, you know, we're, we're all, you know, we want, we want the best for each other no matter what, right? Because if we all do well, the whole city thrives. The whole city thrives too. So we definitely need to, I definitely encourage everyone to have the open communication, right? Even though you have the right to it, let's make sure that you become a good neighbor, right? Be a good neighbor, have the strong corporate social responsibility too. Okay? I'll bring it back over here. Does any commissioners want to make any motion?
I'll make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to continue this matter to a later date. I do not feel that there has been enough conversation between the two parties or enough collaboration for a more sustainable project. And to that point, our city is nothing without our, our people. And I think we need to remember that that comes first and foremost, above everything else. So there's room for multiple passions and multiple causes, but I don't feel that this is at a point where I'm comfortable passing it through either way. And I'd like to see what else can be discussed and improved upon.
I'd like to second that motion. I think the thing we're all, it sounds like we're feeling is you've, you've got the rule of the law and you've got the spirit of the law. And so the rule of the law, according to our general plan, it, this is fine. But the spirit of the law, which is what I think we really need to focus on more, I, shows us that, that this needs further examination. As far as the noise thing, you probably didn't know this, but I was a special ed teacher and I know that my students and actually family members that I have are greatly disturbed by sudden noises or loud noises and, and it can cause them to do things they wouldn't normally do. I saw it in my classroom, I see it in my family. And so I, I, I want to, I want to second that motion. I don't think enough cooperation has happened here. So.
Is this with a date certain or are we, are we just going to?
We would, staff would prefer that, that you would pick a date certain. And so the upcoming hearings include April 5th, April 19th, which would be essentially a month from tonight, and May 3rd, which would give it about six weeks. So, you know, we, we would recommend that it would be continued to a date certain.
April 19th.
I would, I would do at least four weeks, but probably six to give time for the conversations to happen.
I think we should do the May 6th.
May 3rd.
May 3rd, whatever.
Can we also, can we also make sure that if we push this to May 3rd, we make sure that we have translators?
Yes, we, we received that request late, so I, I appreciate that, Chair Vang. We will make sure that we have translators here at City Hall as well as on Zoom.
Thank you.
Yep.
You, you want to state that?
I would like to know if there's any recommendations, perhaps a list of things that they should do between this time and not just allow a certain time without being specific. What is it that we would like to see?
The, the commission can give very specific guidance as to what you would like to see in terms of communication between the two property owners and any tenants or other parties involved. Certainly, the, the commission can give direction as to what you want to see beyond just giving them an opportunity to talk.
I personally would like to see more communication, more community involvement and perhaps meeting, taking into account everybody's feelings and emotions and.
meeting, taking into account everybody's feelings and emotions, and perhaps giving them a peace of mind, speaking to them about being part of the design, part of the business, and listening to their concern. That's what I would like to.
It's fine. And also, I definitely want to make sure we follow up on, go ahead.
Okay, so there, hold on. So there is a motion pending, so anything that you add to it right now would be an amendment that would have to be basically approved by the, the commissioner who motioned, as well as the commissioner who seconded. So I don't know if you wanted to get commissioner by commissioner, so, you know, if you approve of the added condition, conditions from the first commissioner and then you, and then you can add what you want and go back and forth.
So do we have to?
Start all over?
Yeah, do we need to start all over now?
No, just friendly amendments to the motion.
Do we need to make sure that Commissioner Wagner states on record that she's gonna allow for amendments?
Correct.
Okay.
So I'd like to make a motion to continue this matter to May third, and I will allow for amendments to the motion.
You sure about that?
I don't know now.
We have a motion?
I think that I'm seconding what she just said.
Okay. The Commissioner Diaz?
I think I'm also seconding.
But you want to make sure you state your?
Yeah.
Definitely, I would like to see more community involvement and, and taking each party into account and meeting.
And then with me, with my amendment is, I want to make sure that we do follow through with the attorneys in, in regards to his statements, just to make sure that we follow through with that, too. All right. So we have a motion made by Commissioner Wagner, seconded by Commissioner Bray with amendments. Let's please take vote.
Commissioner Leyde? Commissioner Diaz?
Yes.
Commissioner Bray?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Yes.
Chair Vang?
Yes. So the issue, the item will be seen on May?
Third.
May third. May third. All right, next, we have reports by secretary.
Good evening. Thank you. I will be brief. I'd like to welcome Commissioner Leyde to the dais and to thank her for her public service. It's, it's a big job. You each understand that. I do want to remind each of you that there are attendance requirements for service on the planning commission. Please make sure when you receive the email on Fridays, acknowledge that you received the email and whether or not you will be in attendance on Wednesday night, so that we can prepare for, for the evening and to ensure that we're meeting the requirements. Thank you all for your time tonight.
Thank you. It's eight forty. Thank you, everyone, for joining us tonight. Everyone, have a wonderful evening.